Okay, we'd like to call to order the July 22nd, 2024 Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission Meeting. Ms. Bergamme, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Strain.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Ms. Blavsky.
Here.
Ms. Gomes.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Acting Chairman Darpeno.
Here. Mr. Laflambe is excused tonight. Moving on to approval of the July 8th, 2024 meeting minutes, could I please get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gold and second by Ms. Blavsky. Are there any corrections? Or any comments?
I do have a comment on line 491. So I have a specific comment and then there was just a general comment I had to make on this short-term rental discussion. But on line 491, I didn't get a chance to check the recording, but I'm fairly certain and definitely as of today, it was my intent. It said disallow in R1, R2, R3, and RR. I was trying to be careful in specifying that, being conscious of the statements around ban, that it's only those residential districts.
Yeah, and I don't remember that sentence off the top of my head, but that has been your consistent.
Yeah, it shows up later. It shows up later on line, um, it shows up later on line 527. But I think I actually said it in both places.
Yeah, I mean, if that's your, you could make the amendment to reflect the record. Disallow short-term rentals in the R1, R2, R3, so if you would make that motion. If you guys may have noticed, the cadence of the minutes are a little different of an intern doing them.
Yep, yeah, no, I definitely noticed that because in addition, and there's no place to put it, so we can take it one at a time. So that was one. And the second one, I think I did ask a direct question of legal about does that constitute a ban? And I didn't see that reflected anywhere.
I mean, we could re-listen and bring them back if you want to, but that may have been the meeting before. You think it was both meetings?
Definitely, it was the last one.
Yeah, it's been discussed in both.
Yes, been discussed in both, but I think in the last one, I was able to summarize and say that's kind of the only legal question I have left.
Yeah, because I wouldn't know where to insert that or amend, and if you do want that in there, then my recommendation would be that we table the minutes and I can have the intern listen for that specifically.
Maybe that might be better. Okay, yep. I mean, it's a careful topic, right? You know, this, I look at this and I see it all as being evidence, right? We can, and I didn't get a chance to replay it, but I think if we could do that.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
I would just, I would recommend a motion to table, you know, pending us reworking the short-term rentals, just making it a little more specific.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Blavsky. All in favor of tabling the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, action carry. All right. Moving on to public hearings, we have no public hearings. So we will open it up to privilege of the floor. Anybody wishing to speak about any open planning or zoning matter, please approach the podium. Okay, no one present here. Laura Clark, do we have anyone online?
We don't have any online or emails.
Nothing, okay. So hearing none, we will close privilege of the floor. We have no unfinished business, so that will bring us to new business, which is our first and only resolution tonight. So this is a resolution 2024-27, Resolution for Site Plan Approval for a Lot Line Adjustment at the E1 located at 2773 Balltown Road. Now therefore, be hereby resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby grant final lot line adjustment approval for 2773 Balltown Road and parcel 31. Dot 00-1-73.4 as shown on the aforementioned one-page survey drawing with the following conditions. One, prior to the recording of the plat, the final lot line adjustment map and associated deed shall be sent to the Planning Department for their review and approval. Any changes, additions, or deletions requested shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the Planning Department before printing the MyLars. Ms. Gold, the project lead, get a motion.
I'd like to move that.
Okay, move by Ms. Gold.
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan. We have Mr. Pleschek here?
Yes. Thank you. So yeah, so we had a chance to review the resolution. We had a chance to review Laura's July 17th comment letter. And we don't see any issues addressing all of her comments. I think there were nine of them. So it's really just adding further information on the plat, which we're willing to do. And we'll share it with Laura prior to submitting final documents for signature, and then we can file it. So yeah, I don't see any issue. If there's any other questions the board has, I'm here to answer them.
And I will just note, it's kind of straightforward because it's just moving the lot lines a bit. One comes out a little bit ahead, but basically they're both non-conforming lots because of the way they're laid out. This makes them somewhat more conforming, which is a plus to the town.
Thank you. Yeah, and I did get a chance to, Laura had sent the easement documentation over and we had a chance to look at it, and it's actually, it won't affect, to my understanding, will this work? Yeah, to my understanding is that this is where the Hillside Ventures property is. And that easement is sort of like, like through here, if you follow my red dot here, and then it kind of curves up like in this area here, right? It looks like it starts to like close in on itself. But knowing that easements run with the land, if, you know, if it did go through here, then those lands would also have the easement as well. But from the documentations that we've provided so far, we don't see that it intersects the two land swap areas, so I think we're okay.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay, Ms. Bergamme, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Strain.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Blavsky.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Acting Darpeno, Acting Chairman Darpeno.
Aye.
Can I do that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
He's the chairman now.
That's okay.
You gotta point it.
That's what I thought. Notes reflected as well.
Okay, resolution passes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pleschek. All right, moving on to discussion items. First one up is 929 Pierce Road Sketch Plan Application for a Two-Lot Subdivision. Mr. Laflambe is not here tonight, so we will fill in for him. So recently, he performed a site visit and actually took some photographs of the property itself, walked it with the owner, had a quick summary about the keyhole lots, and part of the explanation that he gave us, which was helpful, was how large this back parcel is and how far it is actually away from other adjacent lots, just based on the nature of how long and thin the lot is. The site plan that was part of the package has been updated a little bit. The driveway cut is, looks like it's completely lineal now, goes up against the barn. And I think there was a little bit more road frontage added to it. Is that correct?
So we were proposing the same right now. This is something that I was going to discuss with the board. What we did though, we did straighten out the back of the front lot, lot number one, if you recall. Like this is the old sketch here. I don't know, do you have the new one, Laura?
Um, I think we're trying to just discuss the maps that are in the packet.
Gotcha, okay. So, so yeah, so the changes that I've made now, right, is this line I've squared off here. Keeping this more regularly shaped that the board is looking for. This frontage here is 55 feet, 55.2 feet. And one of the things I was going to discuss is we could take this front line and just angle it a little bit to increase the frontage of this. Because, you know, this lot doesn't really need the frontage if this existing driveway remains the same. And the other thing you had mentioned is this driveway actually shifted northerly along this property line. And I was there with Mr. Laflambe when we walked it. We spent a good hour out here and realized that there's a lot of good features on this property. And along this northerly property line, there's good vegetation there, but the vegetation allows a driveway, like just with some trimming and having this driveway, you know, be further away from the existing house, come up and through here, and then, you know, swing around, and then what we did was we moved this house back a little bit more and angled it so that, you know, it had plenty of room around and further away from all the residents. But this whole property is, is pretty good buffered all the way around the property. And then if we keep this driveway up in here and curve it in, there's actually a nice patch, like right where my red dot is, where we can keep a lot of these trees as well. And that tree or this cluster of trees would actually help soften and buffer this new driveway from the existing residence. So those are things we were talking about. And then back to this barn, originally, we were thinking of removing the barn. And I discussed that with Mr. Laflambe, and he said, you know, if it were him, he'd love that barn to stay on the property. But again, it's going to be up to the buyer of this home, of this lot, whether or not they want to tackle that barn or not. So I carried that conversation with the owner, Mr. Squillia, and, and mentioned that to him. And, and he said, yeah, I'm not opposed to keeping it there, you know, because I'd have to tear it down. It costs money. But if I can keep it there, you know, as long as it's safe enough, you know, we can work with a buyer to, you know, if they want to keep it up, you know, we would keep it. So that was another thing that I was going to bring up to the board to see, you know, if you wanted it removed or we could leave it on the plan until, you know, such buyer comes in. And then the other thing we were talking about as well was when we were standing here where the proposed home might be, we were looking in this direction here towards the back of this home. So on the new subdivision plan, I had proposed along this new rear lot line to install some spruce trees, which would help soften, you know, the, the view from the back of this home and the new home, the front of the new home. And again, by angling the proposed house, you know, helps with the orientation of both existing house and proposed house. But yeah, no, it was really, really nice setting, you know, in my opinion, and I think Chris saw it too. So I think those are pretty much all the changes. We did get a chance to review the, all the other flag lots that exist on Pierce Road as well. And, you know, thank you, Laura, for doing that. It kind of gives a good view of what is already existing on the, on the property. And that's why I was suggestion, suggesting that, you know, if, if we want to increase this frontage of, of new lot two, we can certainly do so just by angling it. And if you look at some of the other lots that were referenced here, they did exactly the same thing. They just took a point here at the front setback line and just angled it ever so slightly, which you wouldn't even know that, you know, that line was adjusted if, you know, as you're driving up and down Pierce Road. And, you know, so I don't know if you've seen the new plan or not, but with the driveway pushed up to the north and having more of a curve and, you know, trimming these trees, you wouldn't even see this house back here from Pierce Road. Like that's what Chris and I were looking at, like, you know, this is very unique. It's nice, like, you know, you're set here, like, you feel like you're private when you're back there. And as you're, as cars are driving up and down, you're not going to, you know, you, you may see, you may notice like this curb cut, but you're not going to see, you know, that house way in the back, you know? It's not going to like be standing out in front of you, like, wow, they got another lot back there. So, so yeah, so I think it's a unique piece of property. Even with these minor changes, like squaring the, the property lineup, this back lot is still over one acre.
So if you could pull up the map, Laura, that shows the subdivision. So planning went through the exercise of taking a look at all of the existing flag lots that are there and the chart that goes with it. So one of the takeaway summaries from from that lot adjustment analysis is that 929 still remains on the smaller side overall compared to the ones that have been previously approved there.
Yeah, the only thing, if I, if you don't mind, when I was looking at the, this analysis, if you go to like 862 and 834, I don't think those lots required area variances. So I don't know if it's fair to, to include those in this analysis, but, you know, there are other lots that had to get variances because of the frontages, you know, three of them, which I think the smallest frontage on, when they'd subdivided 845 for Sylvester, was 20 feet wide. And then the other smallest one was 25, and then the third one that I see here was 60 feet wide. And right now we're at 55. And I was thinking, you know, like, again, if, if we angled that to get to 60, we're, we're back to, you know, whatever the largest frontage lot is on Pierce Road.
Thoughts or concerns?
So given that it appears to be on the smaller side, I wonder if we can go back to the previous drawing, Chairman, that you were showing where we saw the proposed, yeah. The home size and design would be driven by the buyer?
That's correct.
And so that one that's sort of drawn out there is comparable to the one that is there now?
It could be, yes. Yeah, the way we see it is, you know, you're looking at maybe 2,500 square feet to 3,000, depending. You know, could be a ranch. If it's a ranch, then the, the footprint tends to get a little wider. But yeah, we don't know exactly what the footprint of that house is going to be. That would be done at the building, you know, plot plan, building permit time.
And just, this is just my ignorance that's left over from my zoning board time. As you come down that flag lot, I know when we did them there, there was always the, the fire department access question. So with the barn there, it looks like there would be sufficient room. Do we, that may be beyond our jurisdiction, but enough room for a truck to get in there and turn around?
That's a worthwhile question. Sure.
Because it's a pretty long driveway to get down initially.
Yeah, typically with fire truck is when you're greater than 500 feet of driveway. So this, this leg from, from the right of way here to, to the back of this property line is going to be roughly 218 feet to, to, you know, essentially the front of the barn, the existing barn that's there. And then if you extend that and we move this back a little bit even, that could be another, you know, 100 to 150 feet. So we would still be less than 500 feet. And, you know, sometimes, you know, boards would request that, you know, a turnaround be provided for that case for any emergency, which we sort of have one here, and it'll only get better as we move this house further away and provide the turnaround like right, right there, you know, and then over.
So I guess when does that come into play?
Yeah, there's a, usually when we get to a certain point in site plan review, we would pass that off to emergency services, but I believe your assessment's correct. It's not that long of a lot. But we can encourage a turnaround for emergency services. You know, sometimes that comes into the design anyways, and it meets the criteria of what they're looking for.
Okay.
Actually, any, any driveway over 150 feet has to be built to the specifications of handling a fire truck, but it doesn't necessarily need a turnaround.
Okay.
But it does need like 16-foot height clearance on the trees, and it does have to have a certain weight carrying capacity, which like Lucy had to do on his, so. Yeah, but it's, um, it's a little, it's a little bit different between a road and a driveway, so the building code threshold for a driveway is 150 feet.
Okay, yeah, and we'd be happy to meet those specs.
Does the angling of the driveway that you're suggesting put this any closer to the house on the other side?
When you say the other sides?
The next property.
Like the, these over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so this guy's driveway right is, is along the southern portion of the property line. Ours would be next to that, but there's a really good buffer between the two properties.
Like how close to the property line? And how close to the building?
If I were to guess, it's, it's probably a good like 15 to 20-foot swath of, of vegetation. And, and that's what Chris and I, we, we actually, you know, we walked the entire property and, and we walked back out of here to, to determine where the best location of the driveway would be. And we're like, yeah, if we move this further north, we would literally follow the existing tree line without cutting any more trees to the north. And then we ended up walking it all the way back and we ended up back here again and just, and that, yeah, it was just, you know, it really, I think it, it fits, you know, putting this driveway as far north, but keeping the vegetation that's there. And that's what we, as we were walking, it's like, yeah, this still provides a good buffer to this neighbor next to us.
So how much closer to the neighbor will it be?
From this plan? I think we were moving it maybe another 10 feet to the north.
That's the driveway.
And I can't read distances from here.
I, I wish I could show you like the latest one that I shared with.
So he's going to move the driveway almost the width of that driveway that's shown?
Yeah. So it's going to be a lot closer to the other property?
Correct.
Yeah, it's, it's probably going to fallow like right here, right, like, like this. That would be the, the north edge. And then, you know, obviously we got to curve it this way if we're going to try to save the barn. But all this, all this vegetation, you can sort of see it from this aerial, you know, has a very good vegetation buffer between this resident and where the proposed driveway would be.
Can I just ask, is this, do we know the, the exact footprint or is that just an estimated?
It's just an estimated right now.
How is that barn and the setbacks as drawn?
I think it's on the line, property line. It's pretty close to, you know, it's a pre-existing structure.
Okay. So we, pre-existing non-conforming with this still?
Yeah, and typically if the new lot isn't changing any of the dimensions of a pre-existing non-conforming, it just stays.
Yeah, and at some point, like they, they did an addition, like from this point to the west, it would be so like, there's this, I don't know, size-wise, maybe 20 feet by the width of this, where that, that structure is, like, needs a lot of work. You know, so at least that, I think, you know, unless somebody really wants to shore it up and spend some really, you know, a lot of dollars to, to shore that side up, I think, you know, maybe that comes down, you know, depending on who buys this and who wants to tackle it, you know?
It's, I saw the pictures that Mr. Laflambe sent from the walk-through. It's, it's an interesting structure.
It is.
But it does look like it's going to need someone that wants to tackle it and stabilize it and then have a purpose for it.
Right.
So I think the big challenge in front of us here is that this would end up being the smallest frontage on Pierce Road. But by almost a factor of two, it seems.
The smallest lot that we had allowed go into a flag lot type of situation. The frontage is about equal when you average it out. But the size that you're starting with to do the subdivision is a half acre smaller than any other flag lot that we've seen on Pierce Road, and it's not adjacent to any of the existing flag lots.
Right.
Was Chris's, was his evaluation of the walk, what, what was his? What, what, did he have a positive view of it or was it sort of neutral or?
I think the summary fairly would assess that there's enough room to put a house back there. The barn could be saved if, if chosen to, because it is an interesting piece of the property. There could be limited disturbance to the natural vegetation that's there. And again, the house, he felt, would have been secluded and not seen from either adjacent properties except for the parcel that's, that's being subdivided here. So he was leaning towards proposing that it would get approved.
I, I just, um, I just want to say you've, you've done a great job, so kudos for that. I just really struggle with these lots and, um...
I mean, if, if you can zoom in on, on the, the right side of that, like when you look at each lot in particular, right, like, like look at 875 Pierce Road, that's only eight tenths of an acre. 879 Pierce Road is 1.2 acres. And then if you skip to 859 Pierce, that's .94 acres. And then 853 Pierce Road is 1.05 acres, right? Those are comparable, like we're, we're proposing .6 for our lot one and 1.12 for our lot two. So, you know, it is larger than some of the lots that are there, but yeah, when you take an average, you know, the average doesn't go in our favor. But our lots will be larger than what already exists. You know, so I think that's what Chris saw too, and when we were back there, it did lend itself. There was plenty of room, we felt. And when I walked away from that meeting with Chris, I thought it was a positive thing.
And with that, with that footprint, with the elevations and so forth, would that also come before either the Planning Board or the Planning Department? I, I have a concern about the size of the footprint as well. Because we don't know, obviously, we don't know what it's going to look like or how tall it's going to be or, you know, it, it may be perfectly fine now, but if, you know, the proposed footprint suddenly gets bigger and now perhaps the other adjacent parcels can see, I just, there's just a lot of moving parts here, so that's, that's my concern.
Yeah, um, there have been some limited circumstances in average density developments where the Planning Board has kind of actually put a minimum size on the home, not a maximum, minimum. But the Planning Board doesn't typically get into the size of the home they have asked for. The plans, if they're available, for instance, like Seneca Road had the footprints of the home that they're actually building now on there, which is really useful for review. But in my experience, you know, what tends to happen is more is cleared than the Planning Board, you know, really chooses to try and save the vegetation. And the, the footprints are almost never smaller than what's proposed on a Planning Board map. That's just, that's just a fact.
And they do still have to make the side yard and rear yard requirements.
Yeah, the side yard and rear yard, they're pretty big for the proposed home. They could get a, you know, they could double or triple the size of that home and still not be really impacting the setbacks there.
The other thing too, I think would be important is, like, the grade in the back actually is lower than the back of the existing home and Pierce Road. I think it's about, I had the contours on the plan, but it's roughly like six to eight feet lower in grade back there than, than where you are at Pierce Road. So I think that helps with, you know, like elevation, building elevation, like you're going towards. But yeah, so like these are two-foot contours here. And, you know, I think you're a good, I believe.
About eight feet.
Yeah, so it's about eight feet, right, yep.
So would they be changing the elevation there?
No, you wouldn't want to because, you know, I mean, you will, you know, establish a finished floor elevation of the proposed home in the back and then swale around it. But we're not looking, because it would cost money to bring fill in so high to fill it in. And something like this may even lend itself to a walkout basement, depending. But, but I think rather than it being level and then you do a two-story structure, you know, this actually helps view shed from Pierce Road if you're already starting at, you know, minus eight elevation from the roof.
So just with the talk of contours, you guys can kind of see up in the top part of that, there's a house that in the aerial is being built. It's actually completely built now. But we know that these lands, the, that this lot, the house that's being built and the next one, and there might even be one more, our drainage challenge, there's no question about it. So adding an previous driveway here, like we're definitely going to have to, if you guys do want to move forward with the sketch plan, drainage is definitely going to be something that we're going to have to be really careful with in this area.
That was my question. So the nine, is it 929 Pierce Road, which is the, where we're moving the driveway toward their, toward the property line?
939.
939, sorry, it's not zoomed in enough. The orientation of that house, the, is, is, it's facing Pierce Road, I'm assuming, right?
Uh huh, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's a side yard essentially that the driveway is moving closer to?
Mm-hmm.
I'm queasy on this, and I see potential for a number of environmental impacts, especially on the neighbor to the north.
Well, as far as drainage, right, we can, we can drain, pitch the driveway away from that neighbor and we can come up with a drainage design that, you know, I'm sure we can, you know, keep the water infiltrate on site, you know? We, we've done stormwater analysis before in situations like this, I don't see it. No, I think we got plenty of room to accommodate that. And again, back to the trees, like we wanna save it, all the trees, right? You're really, we're talking trimming, you know, because the, you know, if you walk the property, you'll see what Chris and I saw, like, there's openings that, you know, you would wanna put the driveway through and, you know, it really makes it a nice piece of property.
So Luigi, I love that you say that, because you know much I love trees. But like my experience, even with this owner, when he subdivided farther down on Pierce Road, he was given a specific condition from the planning board to save as many of the white pines as he could, and there is not a single white pine in front of any of those homes now. So it's, it's nice to say, but I, I think you really just have to consider that that doesn't always happen.
Yeah. And when it's initially paved, the driveway can be perfectly pitched and all that. When it gets repaved, don't count on it being done as well. I know I, I was very insistent and they didn't do it right. And I went with a high-end paver.
So, um, it sounds like you've got a couple items that you were working on as far as site plan alignment, reconfiguration. We'd like to see those, there were some good images that Mr. Laflamme forwarded. The whole planning board hasn't seen those yet, so I think we can get that into the packet. Have that summary added to the, to the next, uh, next notes and then have you come back for another plan update review. I think that'd be the, be the logical next step. You know, this does go to zoning as a recommendation, so, so the board's aware of that. And I think maybe if you can work through some of those things, if there's a little bit more delineation or images that you can, you know, show of the site, that might be helpful.
Okay, sure.
Matt, I think your main option is basically angling that line, that frontage on Pierce Road.
Increase the frontage a little bit.
There's really not a lot of other options here, unless we forego it.
Yeah, I, to me, I don't think the, the angle does much of anything, it tries to buffer the numbers. I think down the line, it makes it a little more difficult, you know, depending on who gets it. Personally, I would see if you're gonna do the application, I would keep this stuff straight as possible.
Right, but we're gonna be faced with making a 55.2 frontage decision.
Which keep in mind is greater than three, three lots, I think, or two lots, two lots on Pierce Road and the third one being 60 feet. And we're at 55 and change.
So this is that balance between what's done previously, how large those lots are, what we have in the comparison plan, so. I think, I think one more pass at this would probably be, probably good. Any other thoughts or concerns?
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on to next item, uh, 1045 Palmer Avenue, sketch plan application for a two-lot subdivision. Are you Ms. Griffin?
Yes, I am.
Hi, go ahead and state your name and address.
My name is Sandra Griffin, I live at 1045 Palmer Avenue.
So we have a, a current lot that has a house on it with a joint property to it. The city of Schenectady shares part of the parcel line through the back, but the street frontage is in Niskiuna. And looking to do a subdivision.
Yes.
Give a brief recap of the proposed project.
Okay. I have been a resident on Niskiuna since 1987. Actually, due to, um, people moving to the suburbs, I was moved up from Dutchess County to here because it was more affordable. I've been here since then, my children are going to school here, we've been in the house over 37 years. I am starting to pre-plan, um, aging at home. So my goal is to have the property divided so that I may place another house on that property that is one floor easily accessible. That, and it's a be, my goal is that it would be a two-family, so if we get to the point where family member has to come back or whatever, it's not disrupting everybody's life, that's my thought. And so that's why I'm making a request to, um, subdivide the lot. It will not change the consistency of the street. Most of the houses on the street have a 40-foot, um, width. My lot is 80 by 200, but 173 is in Niskiuna and the other part is in Schenectady. So I have the privilege of paying both towns and city their due. So I'm here today to ask for the possibility of being able to do that.
So this area of Palmer is one of the few areas in town that does have a, a larger collection of two-family homes with the, you know, proximity to being, uh, next to the city of Schenectady. So you're right, there's, there is consistency in this traditional neighborhood development where houses are close, um, setbacks are very, very small. Yet it's one of the few open lots on, I think there's one other one a little bit further up on Palmer with houses setback, but that actually has a double wide space. So it's, it's, it's interesting, if you build to the current setbacks, you end up with a 10-foot wide house, which obviously isn't practical.
Correct.
But then also have to, have to go to zoning. So I guess the, the, the big discussion here is, is, you know, how to get another house on this lot and make it not only harmonize with the neighborhood, but also it's gonna have to go to zoning and go through, so.
Right, um, this is all new to me, I'm sorry. So my, my concept is, um, I own one of the houses. So the, if, I'm not saying there's not gonna need to be a variance in terms of the house next to me, but my driveway is there, the house would be closer to my driveway. And, um, the house next door to me, 1039, their driveway is on the other side anyway. So, so there wouldn't be any conflicting driveways. We now have the buffer of the lot between the two houses anyway on one side, and I'm not going to affect the house. I'm not sure what the number is, I get mixed up, I think it would be 1047 maybe, on the same. My house is 1045, I assume the numbers go up, so it would probably be 1047. So I'm not going to affect that side at all from the standpoint of where the house will be placed, it's not gonna be close to their fence, it's not gonna be close to anything on that side, the only thing that we'd be close to is mine.
So you'd have a house close proximity plus a driveway would have to be, uh, put in, correct, in theory?
That's what I believe.
And, um, not a shared driveway?
That would depend on if we had to or not, I would prefer not to, I feel like there are less complications if you have your own driveway.
They're not encouraged.
So, um, that's, that's my opinion about it.
Yeah, I'm just bringing this up on Google Maps to just get better.
So your current home is a one-family?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
But it has the appearance of two, because always, because all the houses architecturally look the same, mine looks like a two-family.
Understood.
Can I just ask, so I'm looking at, at the Google map of your home. 1045, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, which are you talking about, behind your home or the side? It looks as though one, the parcel to, looking at it to the right is blurred out, I don't know why that is, but, um... I guess you could do that with Google, you can request them to blur out your home, I, I'm just wondering.
It's to the left.
Okay, it's to the left, okay.
The house, I don't know what you mean.
So, so it's to the, the...
Are you talking about 1037, 1039, or are you talking about the house?
I'm just, I'm talking about where your proposed new...
Okay, my proposed new would be, um, I don't know.
If you're facing your house.
If I'm looking straight at the yard, it would be to the left of the current house.
Okay.
So between those, somewhere in between those trees.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that's it right there, right? So the challenge is, that's not enough frontage to put in all?
So what would, what would the setbacks be that we'd be talking then, that would have to be approved?
So because this lot would be subdivided, it doesn't get any relief as a pre-existing non-conforming lot, zero. So when it gets subdivided, it would have the setbacks of the R2 zoning district, which are, I believe, 15 feet on either side, the yard is 15, I think it's in the agenda statement. But yeah, it ends up meaning that, like to David's point, without needing a variance, you could only have a 10-foot wide house, because there's no relief, there's no relief when you subdivide now.
Understood.
And I, I also think because, um, this lot is right now pre-existing non-conforming, although really generally it conforms with code. If you were to subdivide, the same is true for the existing house. So automatically the existing house would need variances, because it would also not have, it would also not be grandfathered in with any of its setback.
And then we talked about the driveway, this is in, you know, it is in the town of Niskiuna, which also has to have off-street parking during the winter months, because there's a, there's a parking van on the street for plowing, even though the city line is only a few houses down.
Oh, okay, so I would still have a driveway, they just have to park, we just have to park on this, on, in the driveway, correct?
Correct.
And that's the goal of this one, is to have a driveway.
Right, so you gotta fit a driveway in there up next to not only your lot line, but the other neighbor's not lot line.
Okay, so if I ran the driveway next to the driveway I have, or made a shared driveway, that could possibly work?
It's something we would consider.
Okay.
We have to see the plan, so.
You have to take account of the utility poll.
So you're saying actually the back, your backyard is, you're going to the length of your property depth away from Palmer, it's actually 173?
Yes.
So I mean, just brainstorming out loud, right? The house that the applicant's proposing to build could actually be placed deeper into the lot, be setback much deeper.
Could be, yeah.
I, I mean, I think you said I had to have a 20-foot backyard or something? So if we're talking 173...
But it means you're gonna have to build a long driveway that's in the front, that goes to the house that's in the back. But I think just, I couldn't get my Google maps up, but looking at the dimensions, I think it could fit. All right? Yep, it's right around there somewhere.
So I know that's something that the, um, comp plan committees looked at before, but detached accessory dwelling units aren't something that we currently have in our, our, our building typology. And, you know, this could be an actual good example of one that could work. That's, you know, in a nested neighborhood, you know, very limited space, but doesn't necessarily have to have a large house built there, something smaller, like you said, like an in-law type, type thing. But I'm pretty sure our current code does not, uh, does not allow that, correct?
Um, no, but I think we've determined that accessory dwelling units, accessory care units, just need an area variance for not being attached. Um, but they are tied to a particular need, so if, for instance, like, um, we didn't subdivide the lot, but we encouraged the, you know, accessory care unit, as far as our code is concerned, it could serve, you know, for hopefully 20 or 30 years, or more. But, um, would eventually falling, no longer being needed, have to be decommissioned as far as like kitchen and stuff like that goes?
Right, and that's what I'm trying to avoid is having something that's built that has to be taken back down. My, the reason why I'm making the proposal is that I think something on the street that's comparable to what's there doesn't change the nature of the, of the neighborhood. From a societal point of view, I'm becoming the old lady on the street. I like that idea, I get to see younger people come in and I think, you know, what happens is people transition out, and they transition out because they can't be in their own home. The cost of going into something else is, um, more than the mortgage would be. And by having a second unit, I feel like the cost of my care, even if I didn't have anything else, might be supplemented by having the other unit. So like you, I hope it's another 20 years before it happens, but, uh, my also feeling is it does go on the tax roll, it'll be a regular house. It's not, um, I did have a conversation with Schenectady in terms of building a ADU where my garage was, but they said I was still gonna have to come to you for water and sewer. So my feeling is just build something in Niskiuna and, you know, have it resolved.
Are there any odd-shaped lots on Palmer?
Um, they're pretty standard, I mean, if you look at this, um...
An odd-shaped lot could potentially solve this.
This tax, these tax parcel, the ones across the street are sort of like a lot and a half. But most of them are pretty standard boxes, yeah.
So I think on Palmer, there are some lots that are double-deep lots as you move further up the block towards, towards Grand. They're just deeper or...
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so, so, but these are garages, I think.
Correct.
I think these are garages.
Right, most of them in the back are garages. Most of them that sit back that far, anywhere from 150 feet back, are garages. In terms of snow, it's like, it's real nice to have a garage 150 feet back, but then you still got to get out.
So it, it, it's interesting, and maybe Laura, you could, um, add a little bit more information. But if, if she opts to go with the city of Schenectady, they allow accessory dwelling units?
Yeah, I think they do, yeah. I don't know that there's necessarily enough room, I mean, the other thing is you could get a, a use variance, which would mean you wouldn't have to take it down, but I don't know what the specifics would be for trying to do that, a use variance for two dwellings, for two dwelling units on a single parcel.
Is the city of Schenectady setbacks the same as ours?
I don't know, we will need to coordinate with them, but my discussion with Schenectady County too, when I, when I talked to Schenectady, city of Schenectady, talked to Schenectady County about this one, not the city of Schenectady yet. But, um, what, you know, what the county said, because I use them as a resource when there's inter... Is that, you know, you could, the county could require a subdivision of the rear parcel itself, or they may defer to us, and we would essentially require the subdivision to go through the Schenectady County part, so that these lines would be square. Um, what we wouldn't want to leave is a weird parcel in the back that's owned by Schenectady County. So one way or another, if you guys can imagine, the world doesn't actually stop, you know, when you hit the city of Schenectady, like this little... like this little red line would have to go all the way to the back.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's the line I drew, right? So, so what Laura's proposing is, this is the subdivision. And I think. I mean, I can see you could squeeze a house in there. She's exactly inside.
Great, so who becomes the governing agency if the unit is placed on Schenectady's parcel? Do we?
They would. Their zoning is gonna ta- if the unit is entirely within the city of Schenectady, their, their code is going to, their code is going to.
Over RDRs or drop.
Yeah, because the building permit is issued, the zoning is issued there. There is actually technically not two dwelling units in the town of Niskuna side. They do actually have separate parcel numbers, even though like we sort of need to treat them like, um, a single parcel.
And, but the Schenectady part, I don't see how I could build something on it anyway. It's, well, if we're a hundred and seventy-three and it's two hundred altogether, that's twenty-seven, what, feet? In the back?
On the one side, the shorter side, you have more, because it's a hundred and five feet. The line sort of cuts it at an angle, so the shorter side you have a little more, but it, I, I actually think if we're talking consistency of the neighborhood, it would be a little strange to push the house far back because all of the na- all of the houses in this neighborhood are on the street.
So what is ten thirty-seven? That has its own number. Ten thirty-nine is the home that's, you can see from the street, and ten thirty-seven isn't.
Ten, ten thirty-seven and ten thirty-nine, I think that's the house next to me.
Yes.
That's a two-family house. And the other reason why is because the last number is ten thirty-nine, and then I jumped to ten forty-five. So forty-one and forty-three would have existed.
In that lie, I see what you're saying. Because on the goo- on Google, they're giving that what looks like a garage, ten thirty-seven.
No, it's because it's a two-unit house. So if you walk up on the porch, there's two.
Both numbers. That's what I thought when I looked at it, okay.
Yeah, but the garage is not, the garage is not a second unit.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, is if I missed that.
And as a matter of fact, they took their garage, there's no garage back there.
Anymore.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And I had a garage, but, uh, well, we had a bad snowstorm and it collapsed. And so originally, um, I was giving informa- I was giving notice from Niskuna to do something, and then the next day they called and said, oh no, it's in Schenectady. So I had to go to Schenectady to have it resolved.
Okay, so interesting project.
Okay.
Those are complicated.
Yeah, has some, has a, a bunch of variables to it. Um, normally what we do is we have someone from the board here, volunteers, a project lead. So I think this would be worthwhile for one or two people to take a look at it. Um, there'll be a review of the comprehensive plan because there's some reference to that that's in there. I believe like Laura said, there's some information from city of Schenectady we should probably, uh, do some dual checking on for due diligence. And, um, and then I think at this point, we should get a project lead on board, get some information, and then get that back to you.
Okay, my, my goal to, like I said, this is all new for me. My goal today was not go out, figure out what house I wanted, and then find out I couldn't do it. So I'm trying to do the due diligence to make sure that whatever I do is going to meet the requirements of the town of Niskuna and also allow me to, to remain in the town.
Okay, I'll, I'll volunteer to be a project lead in just a minute.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Khan.
All right.
And we will help you through that process, having you understand what the necessary steps are, and the planning department will also outline that for you too.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
I think there's some, can work here.
Okay, next up, zoning code updates, short-term rental regulations. So Ms. Gold has offered to step up as project lead for that?
Well, actually, I volunteer to be co-lead, but we don't seem to ever take.
No.
Um. Unless of these got something specific they want to address, I think we might as well go ahead with the public hearing. Uh, we can always take that information and look to see if we want to revise anything at that point. But I don't want to sit on this forever.
So I know that one of the, one of the items was we were looking for, um, legal to answer a couple of questions. I don't know, Mr. Hess, if you had a chance to do any works in some.
So I know the one question that especially Mr. Khan has not answered to is whether or not banning the SDRs in R-one, R-two, and R-three is constituted a ban or it would relate to a legal challenge. And I think I've mentioned this before, there's not a ton of litigation specifically on this yet, so that fact pattern has not been addressed. But that's actually pretty normal with litigation, right? Like if you have the exact fact pattern out there, then it, it doesn't litigate, but it was all before that. So what I would say, how that works then is courts look at facts and circumstances. And what they would look at is how many, what other properties that are on R-one, R-two, or R-three that exist currently would actually be eligible for short-term rentals. Though I don't have that number, I know that, um, planning has been looking at it. I think it's not much. So I know that at the June meeting, town attorney Elena Bennett had advised against the ban R-one, R-two, R-three. I don't know for sure that a court would say that's an outright ban, but my sense is that that's what they would say. So, so the, the recommendation or the advice from the town attorney is not to have something that restricted. There's actually a different criteria, and I think we've discussed that already some. So the one thing I'd like to talk about that I don't think we have talked about before is this situation is different than almost everything else that you guys deal with. Because normally when you act or don't act, the status quo actually helps the town. Right? So if you don't approve a housing development and it gets challenged in Article seventy-eight, nothing's going on until that challenge is taken care of. The difference is, in this particular case, the status quo isn't great for the town, right? So if we're waiting through two years of litigation, then it's, there's an opportunity cost essentially.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess my recommendation is to keep that in mind when you decide on what you recommend to the town board. But the idea that something that would, fixing some of the problem is better than fixing none of the problem, right? So I think that the proposal that's under discussion now will address a lot of the concerns that the neighbors have brought to us. And, and that's your call, not mine, but, but I, I do like the idea of doing something that we think will stand up and that would caution against going forward. Like, I generally have a high-risk tolerance compared to the general public, right? That's sort of part and parcel of my profession. But I like it when the status quo works for my clients. In this case, that's not what we have.
Uh, can you make sure you're talking into your microphone? Clark says you're very quiet.
At least you guys can hear me.
Oh, yeah, that's better.
Much better. Closer, sorry. So I'm happy to answer more questions about this if I can, with the proviso that, um, there's not a lot out there yet on it.
And the only comparison I can come up with is our home occupation use, where we limit the number of outside employees who can be employed there, and I believe it's two. I know when my father had his business in the home, it was limited to two.
Yeah, I don't know if there's actually a limit anymore. I'd have to look.
Oh, there always was.
I don't know that code off the top of my head.
No, maybe we should look at it then. I'll try to do that.
Not to aggravate the whole situation, but I just want to have, have a note on the record, there were twelve cars in that driveway this weekend.
Yeah, so I mean, I have been looking at how many homes are outside the zoning district of those zoning districts. I mean, it's on the order of like ten out of eight thousand. So I mean, it's, it's, that's the problem. Um, and I can tell you, I know you don't all agree with me, but I feel very confident that I can enforce this code as written to mitigate the problems that we're hearing about on Milton Keynes. It may need to be adjusted in the future, but I do feel like this gives me enough that I can, that I can work with it.
With your current staffing, Laura?
Yes, absolutely. I, I'm not seeing a hundred of them. I'm seeing three, and I, I'm a very confident that we can take this code and work with it. I wouldn't recommend it otherwise.
And that's important because as things stand, we don't really have anything.
Mm-hmm, it's going to continue to evolve.
So are we comfortable, I'm getting ready to call for a public hearing then?
I am.
Okay, uh, do we have to finish the draft that we currently have in order to get something out to the public?
It's finished.
It's finished, okay.
Yeah, it's actually written in a way that you can adopt it.
If we can adopt, okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure that was.
I did make a couple of changes. We did never really landed on exact numbers. I did limit it to three bedrooms, and based on the formula that I saw before, that limits it total to eight people.
Okay.
I did, um, they, they allowed for, um, a certain timeframe in which guests could visit. I decided, um, that wasn't in what the intention was for the code, so I just took it completely out and said, no guests. Um, and there was one other thing that I, that I just clarified. Um, vehicles are limited to total of four.
Okay.
Yeah. I suspect we'll probably have people pushing for that number to be lowered. And I'm not, I think I'm probably willing to consider that, but I think it's be, it's a good point to get the public's input on it. I know there'll be people who are very disappointed that we're not just banning it altogether, but I don't see how we can. Our council is telling us, he doesn't see how we can, so.
Again, just for clarification, I've never said ban altogether. I've said not R-one, R-two, and R-three. In fact, I'm willing to put RR in play, and RR is a large swath of area.
I mean, RR probably has like fifty to sixty houses, be my guess.
And I'm, I'm willing to compromise on RR, on it being, unhoseded short-term rentals be allowed there.
And yeah, RR.
The densities of R-one, R-two, and R-three, and the nature of neighborhood and community as per the comp plan, that's where I'm having difficulty.
But the point of.
But I've never set a ban, don't.
But residents have.
So I'm not a resident. I'm an appointed member of the planning board, and I'm speaking at a level of diligence.
Okay, I appreciate your clarification. Um, I will note that part of the reason for the RR lots being so large is there was concern about protecting the land. And I don't know that just saying, you can have these, uh, paying guests, as it were.
Hang on, that's what we want to do for the entire town. I'd say the code is adopted, as written, but only allowed in not R-one, R-two, and R-three. Therefore, RR is open.
My point is that would put more pressure on the RR where.
They'd have it anyway with first version of the code that allows it anywhere.
So, um, so I know that we do have still a diversity of opinions on it, but I do think that it is ready for public hearing. Two other things that I did, that I did formalize that we had talked about before, I think it had four strikes and you're out. Now it's one. Um, and then, um, that we received, you know, the, the, I've been going back and forth with the public. They've been very good about sending me comments. One of the comments that we heard last time, which I actually think will help substantially in enforcement, is to make sure that the, is to require that the listings actually say hosted and have the limit and have the rules. Um, because, uh, that's a very easy thing for us to enforce. If we pop on and it doesn't say, this is a hosted rental, limited to eight people with no guests, that's an immediate one-strike. If we see it again, then they lose their license. So, um, I thought that that was a really good thing to have on the code. It was actually in the code in a couple of different places, but I put it in basically every single section. So that, that's in there too. So it, it's a really strong code, and it is, there are parts, always noise, stuff like that is always a little bit hard to enforce, but there's a lot of concrete stuff in here that is easy to enforce, so.
I think having them posted and having that noted in the rental in the first place will probably make it less popular for the people who are the cause of the complaints we've been getting.
All right.
All right.
So we'll make provisions to call for public hearing?
So we would have a resolution to do that at the next meeting, correct? Or are we doing it now? Next meeting.
I think you have to call for the next meeting, right? Have a resolution ready for the next.
That's my understanding, but I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, so I think.
We have a resolution to call the public.
I put it in the agenda statement. Yeah, that would work because we couldn't have a public hearing earlier than the second meeting in August.
Right.
Because of Seeker. So, um, if you guys, yeah, if we want to draft a resolution calling for the public hearing in the first August meeting, we would have the right time for us to hold the public hearing is the end of August.
Which I think is the twenty-seventh.
It's the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, okay. That was close.
Is my daughter's birthday.
Ah, memorable day then.
All right. Sounds like a plan.
Okay, good, thank you. Uh, moving on to reports, seventeen sixty-nine Union Street, capital cardiology sign request was withdrawn, and the tenant, I guess they're going to, I guess what's the latest update there is?
So we did talk to the owners. The, the sign company withdrew their sign application, never went to the zoning board, said they will not be pursuing a facade sign at this time, and they will be looking to do the interior decals on the windows. Um, did talk to the owner though, and talked to them about a number of things, and sent them the site plan application so they're aware. I'm hoping for that to come in very shortly. It was a cardiology office to a cardiology office, so it's not terrible, but we do need to make sure that they go through that process.
Right, yep, yeah, that was a missed.
That was missed.
Part of the entire process before, so yeah, now at least we're doing it.
It was partly because the Balltown Road one actually wasn't a tenant change, and this one was.
Right.
Yeah, so we were really focused in on the signs and missed the tenant change on this one.
Right, right.
Can I just ask, does Albany Med own the building?
So it is not Albany Med, nope. The owner of the buildings, they're a company in Seattle. Um, I think they just hold, it's kind of like a realty holding thing, yeah.
Helpful, thanks.
Albany Med is a leasy.
An update on thirty-four ten State Street, upstate guns and ammos. Mr. Seraphini withdrew his application. He's not moving forward with the addition, and I believe he stated he was going to be removing the metal container.
Within thirty days.
So I don't know what, anything was levied against him as far as the violation?
Yeah, I.
He just served the letter.
Yeah, I, um, he, I spoke with my building inspector today just to make sure that we weren't missing any of the steps to make sure that if for some reason the pod isn't moved in thirty days, that we can't move forward with our court documents. And he was working on that today with, with his secretary, so hopefully that'll be, that'll be ready to go tomorrow or Wednesday.
Okay.
I have. Do we know if he's keeping the business there?
No, we don't know that. I think the insinuation was, maybe not.
That, that was the impression I got.
Yeah. Um, but that wasn't explicitly stated, so. Um, I did have one more item. We, you guys may have saw, but we did put an email out to fill the alternate positions, as you noticed, because Chris can come, we have no alternates. So, um, so there was an email blast at the town. The email blasts are not as far-reaching as they used to be. Feel free to re-email blast or just reach your feelers out. Um, we'd like, I would like to see a number of resumes for the town board to choose from if we could, um, but any would be good, so.
May I ask, have you received any so far?
Uh, one.
Okay, that's not a big number.
Nope. Actually, we received more response for tree council and, um, complete street. Planning board is a heavy lift. I, you know, I appreciate that, you know, that, you know, all the time you guys put into it, I mean, and I appreciate the. and I appreciate the diversity of opinions on the zoning code, like, we could, we could go on, it's a heavy lift, you guys put a ton of work into it, and I mean, you know, maybe I scare people a little with the email blast, but I want to make sure that people know that, you know, one, you have a ton of power to shape your community, and what you do is very consequential and important, but two, you know, it's not, "Oh, I like, I, I like my town, I'll volunteer for this," that's how you go on to the Tree Council. Like, if, if you really have to be committed to come to the planning board, so.
Well, many years ago, we had a member who would open, because the packets all went out on paper back then, they were delivered by 5 o'clock on Friday afternoon, and we had one member who would come to the meeting and open the packet at the start of the meeting, just before the start of the meeting, and you knew that person hadn't really considered things at that point. And I, I think it's better to let people know what they're getting into, which is a point I tried to make at work. We painted a rosy picture, now there's a lot of hard work and there's a lot of saying no.
But he did a beautiful job, and you guys do a great job, and I'm very thankful to have all of you. So let's see if we can find two more people.
Well, we got a good network here, so.
Yeah.
Reach out and see.
Yeah, and so feel free to check the email blasts, it's on Town Hall, if you can't find it. Right now, the process is that if they're interested, they email their resume to Michelle Martinelli and indicate, you know, what board they want to be on, but we're really looking for a planning board. We do have three, two zoning board alternates, too, so for people who are very legal-minded.
Okay, good. Open up to commission business, anything from the board?
Nope, we did say congratulations on being full chairman.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah, I was, I was appointed at the last town board meeting, so, the last resolution, but.
The last resolution.
It was worth the wait.
Wasn't really a.
Regular member.
Yeah, Suey is appointed on the.
And Suey, you were also moved up to the current member, right?
She's on the.
She's on.
On Jennifer tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, okay. Pre-congratulations going out to you as well. Good, okay, uh, there's no other further business, uh, call to adjourn, motion?
So moved?
Okay, Ms. Woski.
Second, okay, second, that's right.
Ms. Strang, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, meeting is adjourned at 8:13 PM.
Oh, it's a good start, David.
Yeah, good job, you guys.
This is the time to be. Yeah, that's okay, that's good.